Ladies and gentlemen, councilmen, welcome to the Bardstown City Council meeting. It is now seven o'clock. It is March the tenth, two thousand and fifteen. And we welcome everybody. We have a large crowd. With that, as presiding officer, I will impose a three-minute rule according to Roberts' rules. You'll have three minutes. We have people in the hallway that's wanting to speak, and I want everybody to have a chance to speak. So Ms. Bryant, the city clerk, will keep time. And please, if I cut you off, I apologize, but you better get your words together in three minutes, please. Okay? Because you got a lot of people that'll three. Okay? First item on the agenda is to receive input from the public. And this is yours to kind of speak with. So from the, I'll take, I'll take the people who sign in first, but everyone will get a chance to, to speak, okay? First on the, name is Michael Johnson.
Yes, my name is.
Please stand.
I'm going to speak regarding something on the agenda. Is he out of time to do that?
Yes.
The way he feels this discussion.
Anything that deals with, anything that deals with the city business.
Yes, yes. All right.
Before you go, just understand that there won't be any other input during the meeting after this point.
After this point.
Yeah, you, you're the maker. You don't have to start it.
That's fine.
You make your statement and direct it to the council, and then further down the agenda, that's when the council will take notes, address your questions, and hopefully they'll take notes and they can do that, okay?
Okay.
She's got you ready, go ahead.
All right. Good evening, councilmembers. Michael Johnson, resident here in Bardstown, and actually moved here from Southern California. So as you can imagine, it's an area with a lot of diversity. I love diversity. I think it's part of what makes America great, here in different perspectives, different cultures, different beliefs. But I'm here this evening because I have some serious concerns regarding some of the proposed changes to the human rights ordinance. And part of that concern is, is it necessary? I know the current ordinance states that it's the city and county policy to promote fairness and equal opportunity among all persons. And so with that language in there, just have some concern of whether it's necessary to change it. Also, the fiscal court last year considered the issue and felt that it was unnecessary to add the additional language of sexual orientation or gender identity. Also, state and federal law doesn't require the addition of those as specially protected classes named in the ordinance. Also, majority of states have not adopted that addition. The Kentucky legislature has not adopted that position. Efforts there have gained no traction. And the overwhelming majority of Kentucky localities also have not adopted that language. So what is the problem in Bardstown that, that needs to be fixed? And the magistrates on the fiscal court last year said they were unaware of discrimination on this issue in Nelson County. And so that's, that's my number one concern, is it necessary? Second, our possibility of unintended consequences with business owners compelled to speak a message that they don't support and to support a message that they, well, is contrary to their religious beliefs, honestly. And also with public restrooms, there's privacy and safety concerns that could be raised with the gender identity issue. So those are my concerns, and the same concerns expressed by the fiscal court, and I believe Ms. Quinones, the commission member, Human Rights Commission member. And if, if the Human Rights Commission is going to propose making these changes, then they have the burden to prove why such changes are necessary. Why, why isn't the law working as it is right now? So with a majority of states, the Kentucky legislature, an overwhelming majority of Kentucky localities, and the Nelson County Fiscal Court deeming the addition of sexual orientation and gender identity unnecessary, then what problem exists in Bardstown to change that calculation?
Mr. Johnson, next question.
Yes. Thank you.
Next gentleman is Ray Johnson.
Thanks, sir. As councilmembers, I also want to address that same proposal amendment to the ordinance. I too am from Southern California, so I have some experience in the development. So my concern as we look at the proposed amendment is, it kind of becomes a slippery slope so often. I saw this firsthand in Southern California where similar amendments were made to ordinances. And amidst of those changes, I began to see a trickle effect that began to affect other areas, some of them in businesses, some of them in schools. And I saw it in the school system, and began to see the ordinances adopted, then they required that the school system would begin to adopt it, but superintendent had to begin to put those into the system. So we moved to a point where at that location, they needed to begin to adopt where if someone came in and they decided that they were biologically one sex, but perceived themselves to be another sex, then they were allowed to go into the restrooms of that opposite sex. Where that became some more privacy issues. And so my concern is that once we began to adopt that, it becomes a slippery slope that may be unintended, but it begins to open the doors. And ironically, adopting such language actually begins to bring discrimination against others, whereas the goal was to protect those against discrimination. I saw this several times, and you heard Michael even allude to it, in several other states and different localities where adopting such language actually began to restrict others and withhold their freedoms and rights that they had. So that's my caution, and I hope that's something you as councilmembers will consider as you look at this proposal. Thank you.
Ms. Leah Quinones.
Thank you all, councilmembers. I have some concerns that those who have expressed, and I'm a recent employee to the Bardstown Nelson County Human Rights Commission, and I was asked not to speak on behalf of the commission, so I'm just speaking as a citizen. I have some concerns regarding the inclusion of sexual orientation and gender identity language in the proposed ordinance. I know the other teams in the community have expressed concerns, and I've talked about as well. I believe that maintaining the current way of the ordinance helps to protect everyone from discrimination, and I feel the fiscal court on that also. I'm concerned about the unintended consequences as well. In ordinances and state laws around the country where sexual orientation language is included, it is posing a problem for some religious institutions, individuals, and business owners, and that's very concerning to me. I'd like to mention three examples that you've likely heard of. There's an Oregon baker who declined to provide a wedding cake for a gay wedding, a Lexington Kentucky t-shirt printer who declined to provide t-shirts for Lexington Pride events, and a Washington State forest who declined to provide flowers for a gay customer's wedding. All three businesses routinely serve gay-owned new customers in the forests, and t-shirt shop owner even employed them, and were friends and have great relationships. The business owners refer the clients to other businesses to be able to meet their needs, and some of the referred businesses even provided free or greatly reduced services to, to the disgruntled customers. But when a Christian business owner is required a very strict request because of a religious conviction, they become guilty of discrimination. The Oregon baker was forced to close his business and find another job to support his wife and children, and he's now facing a potential $150,000 fine. The Lexington t-shirt shop case is currently appealing its discrimination ruling. For the seven-year-old Washington State forest, she's seventy years old. She's also appealing her case. The court has ruled that the government and plaintiff have access not only to her business assets, but also to her personal property and savings for damages. It's troubling that the government would compel businesses to violate the religious or moral convictions. Would it be right, I don't think it would be right, to enforce a lesbian baker to cater a pro-traditional marriage event that she's not support? Would it be right for the government to compel a mudworm caterer to serve pork at a reception? And that is not part of his religious views. Would it be right to force a printing company owned by an African-American individual to print promotional material for a KKK event? I don't think that would be right. I'm also concerned about the use of the gender identity language as well, and how it will affect the use of restroom rooms, locker rooms, and shower rooms, which are already seen as issues coming up in our schools. As a woman, I have privacy and safety concerns about sharing the restroom with biological males. As a parent, I do not want my daughter sharing a restroom with a man or showering next to a man. I've spoken to many other parents that have those concerns as well. I just want to thank you all for allowing me to express those.
Next one, this is Richard Nelson.
Yeah, that's me.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. It's a privilege to speak to you this evening. My name is Richard Nelson. I'm the executive director of the Commonwealth Policy Center, a nonprofit public policy group here in Kentucky. And I realize that this is a challenging issue, and my hope is to present some questions and concerns I have in a respectful and in a thoughtful way. First question I have is, I'm wondering if there's a clear understanding of what sexual orientation means. Consider that there is no scientific consensus on how to define sexual orientation. It is a self-disclosed, self-defined, and subjective category that can refer to thoughts, inclinations, involuntary behaviors. Race, ethnicity, and sex, on the other hand, are inborn, nonbehavioral traits. They are objective categories. Those who are in favor of this ordinance that we're talking about tonight are likening homosexual or gender identity discrimination to racial discrimination. And to do this is to, I believe, to conflate a profound behavioral characteristic with nonbehavioral traits that are already protected by nondiscrimination law. We were once told, and for so long, that somebody's private sex life is nobody's business. Should this ordinance pass, it drags private sexual behavior into the workplace, and here's how. If employers shouldn't ask their employees what their sexual practice or preference is, then how is that employer supposed to know what somebody's sex life is? Nobody wants to ask that then. Employer doesn't want to be asking that. The employee shouldn't be forced to bring it up either. So if they don't hire that potential employee, and if that potential employer, that person being interviewed, suspects that they weren't hired because of some trait that they might have been exhibiting, whatever that might be, they could bring that complaint up to the Human Rights Commission. And we've seen that happen in other parts of the country. Gender identity, this has been talked about by a few people here. The question is, is do we, does this ordinance protect subject to the self-determined right of one born into one biological gender who desires to assume the life of another biological gender? This is an issue across the country. It's an issue just down the road in Louisville as well, in one of the public high schools. I think the concern for business owners is that, you know, it's hard for them to find good qualified employees. They're not going out of their way to not hire somebody. Business, most business owners are looking for people who have the right skill set, who are going to work hard, who are going to show up at the job. Most aren't interested in delving into somebody's private sex life. And if they do, they only hurt their own business. They hurt their credibility as well. Question that was brought up earlier was, why is this ordinance needed? How many complaints have been brought forth to the Human Rights Commission or to the city council?
Excuse me, sorry. It's in three minutes.
Okay. Well, stop. Thank you for hearing me. Appreciate it.
Number five, Anna, is that you? Ah, there's the young lady. Come to the front. Very good.
Good evening. My name is Anna Liptke. I live just right outside of Bardstown. I'm fourteen, and many people think that this is not an issue that young people are concerned with. But for me and my family, this not only goes against our constitutional rights, but our personal beliefs. I want to read you a section from the Bill of Rights, section one, "Right of Liberty, Life, Worship, Pursuit of Happiness, Safety, Free Speech, Acquiring and Protecting Property, Peaceful Assembly, Righteousness of Grievances, and Bearing Arms." So it says that we have the right of life, liberty, and worship. And it later says that we have the right of religious freedom. I'm a Christian. I'm not afraid to tell anyone. I want everyone in the world to know, because I'm so happy about it. But this, this goes against what I believe, and I believe many other people in this town. And not only would, we say this is discriminating gays, homosexuals, transgender, but it's more discriminating the Christians and other people against it, because we are saying they have rights, and we're taking rights away from us and giving others special rights. I didn't do as much research as a lot of other people. I just learned about it today, so I was debating whether I should talk or not, and it's a kind of a scary thing to get up in front of all you people. But I just want you guys to know that I think I support giving homosexual, transgender people equal rights, because I believe that we are all created equal, no matter what color, race, whatever you believe. We are all created equal, and we all need equal rights. We shouldn't give other people equal rights, and we shouldn't take equal rights for ourselves. Thank you.
Mike Gaden.
There we go. I wanted to give up a little bit. He tried.
I love you. I'm Mike Gaden, and as many of you know, I am a member of the Human Rights Commission, but I am speaking as a private citizen. I came to the Human Rights Commission about a year and a half ago with a concern that I had. Earlier that year, I had met a gentleman at a local restaurant. He had just moved here from Michigan, bought a home, refurbished it, and, you know, we talked there, we laughed a little bit. I welcomed him to Bardstown, invited him to my church, got to know him really well, and over the course of getting to know him, he called me one night and was a little distraught. Apparently, his house, he had requested that some of the local neighbors not be on his yard, not be hanging on the trees, breaking limbs and so forth. He came out and he asked them not to do that. Well, this is a gentleman who is not only disabled, but identified as a gay. He, he endured all kinds of harassment. He called the police several times, many calls to 911, many calls to the sheriff's department, many calls to the city police. He even called the state police in Elizabeth Town and contacted the FBI once. I'm not blaming the city police, I'm not blaming the sheriff's department, because they had nothing to turn to, and the only thing that they could tell him was that they had to catch these perpetrators that were damaging his properties, who killed his dogs, did damage to his car, did damage to his home, his air conditioning unit was ripped out of both his car and his home. They had no other choice. They said the only thing they could do was catch the perps on the property and charge them with a misdemeanor. Last fall, the sheriff's department called me. I thought it was one of our properties that we own here in Bardstown, Nelson County, and said they needed to talk to me. Sheriff's chaplain pulled up and informed me that my phone number was the last number on my friend Derek's cellphone before he took his own life. When his mother came to clean out the house, I think she saw what he had endured over the course of six months, because everything of value had been stripped from that home. I'm here representing that person that cannot speak tonight, as well as the others that are afraid to be here for fear of losing family, for fear of losing their home, for fear of losing their jobs. I was shortly thereafter invited to join the Human Rights Commission. When I came and spoke, and I said, who do we turn to if this happens to one of us? Because nobody, real or perceived, whether you identify as gay or somebody identifies you as gay, you could very well end up in the same circumstance that my friend Derek did. Thank you.
Thanks.
Matt Mercer.
It's me. There's no way I'm going to do a better job than Anna, so. Good job, Anna. But I am actually on the side of the fence as Mike here. I've just written down a few of my thoughts. William Cross was born in Bardstown. He became the city's first African-American school board member in 1960. That same year, not so far south, African-Americans were being discriminated against and told where to sit on buses and which water fountains to use. Dixie Hivs became the first woman to sit on the city council in 1982, and even became mayor in 2003. In fact, I would imagine that some people in this room knew Dixie very well. Dozens of Kentucky cities still have never had women leaders in local government. Now, this was back in 2003, which is not bad considering that just a hundred years before that, Dixie would not have been allowed to vote in any general election. My point is this, Bardstown has been proven to have a rich history of being ahead on the curve on important social issues. Generations from now, people are going to look back on this moment, how you voted today. They're going to remember how you voted, how you represented your community. As an ally myself, I urge you to do the right thing. An entire group of people right now are suffering because according to the current law, they really have nowhere to go and no way to fight the injustices that are done to them. Discrimination still runs rampant even today against the people whose only real crime was being born. Members of the council, this is a civil rights issue, and this is what I believe is the civil rights issue of this era. Please represent us well, take a stand, and declare that, declare that you do not tolerate discrimination of any kind. I truly want my children to grow up in a world where all men and women are created equal. Thank you for your time.
Ms. Reed.
No, stop. No, no. I'm Katie Reed. I'm the chairperson of the Bardstown Nelson County Commission on Human Rights, and I have to echo the sentiments of Mr. Mercer. Bardstown and Nelson County has a rich history of human rights. As a matter of fact, in 1966, Bardstown and Nelson County was the first community to pass the most comprehensive Civil Rights Act in the whole state of Kentucky. And this ordinance was revisited in 1986 and was passed without problems when other protected classes were added, which was gender and also, which is referred to as sex in, in the ordinance, and also age discrimination. Now, that was 1986. We haven't been here since 1986. Here we are again, in 2015, because state and federal laws have changed since then. Other classes have been added. As far as age goes, now it's not between the age of forty and seventy, it's age forty and over. Americans with Disabilities Act, that's been passed since then. Disability is not included in our current ordinance that was updated in 1986. All these, these genetic information, there's been a federal law about using genetic information in hiring people. Our ordinance is now not where it needs to be. And that's what we're here for today, to update our ordinance. There's not anyone in this room that this ordinance does not protect. And so we're not asking you to vote on this today. We're asking you to read it through thoroughly. We want more input from people like these today, and I, I just commend you for coming out, all of you, taking the time to come out here to discuss these issues, because that is what it's all about. Not everyone is protected, and our ordinance only allows us to step in for those people who are listed in the ordinance. Now, there is no, I agree with them that there is no state or federal law protecting people from being discriminated against because of their sexual orientation, whoever their, whatever the gender of their partner is that they choose, or there is no ordinance to protect people who have gender identity issues. So we're asking that you go that little extra mile, Anna, and include those people. And with that, I take my seat. Thank you.
I want to take some of those people out there in the hallway. Sir, you want to speak?
Here, here's one, panel.
Okay. Yes, sir. What's there there? Identify yourself, please.
Yes, I'm Ryan Tims.
Ryan Tims.
I don't know if I'm, if you can speak here. I'm actually just, like, a root kid.
Yes, yes, you're not speaking.
I can depend on speaking at all, but anyway, I think it should be really looked into because it's not a human rights issue. It's not something as far as the race of a person, or the religion of a person, or, you know, if they're Iranian or whatever. What it is, is sexual orientation of the person. And I think what's going to open up, I watched a video that showed in Massachusetts where they allow this to come in. Let me get one right here. They showed in Massachusetts where they allow this to come in, and it was really used against business owners, because any time that a person of gender, you know, this issue, decided that they didn't need the promotion that they decided that they should have got, instead of it being a hard work ethic that got them there, and instead of you looking at the person who's qualified for the job because of the previous jobs that they've done or the studies that they've done, I feel like to be something that, because you didn't do the job because of my sexual identity. I think a person's qualification is how hard they've studied, or what they've done through life should say everything for them in getting the job, rather than, do I sleep with, you know, a woman or a man? I think that should be a private issue with the person, and as far as bringing the sound into the open, it should be something that is not brought into the workplace where they would be afraid, the business owner would be afraid, that, hey, if I don't hire this person on, if I've got two people who are just as qualified, then I could be taken to court to be sued and possibly lose my business. So I, I think it's something that Massachusetts, it went through, and this was the first foothold that they got in there. And then afterward, it worked its way through schools, and then middle schools, and then kindergarten, and eventually in the kindergarten, they were brought in books where if you did, it was, I have two babies, and this sort of thing, and if you said in the end that you were, you know, discriminating. So it's not going to stop here. It's going to end up, this is just the first leg of it, is what we're looking at here with the book. It's not something where if, if I'm white or if I'm black, you know, I'm discriminated against a job. It's totally separate from that, it's a personal preference. So I don't think there should be a law that is for any specific person that wants to do something like this, you know, if that's their private life to do this, but a person should be hired on for what they've done, what they've studied, in their life. Does anyone have a thing? Are you getting old by now? My memory's not really good. I'm going to forget. Well, I guess it wouldn't have been a kind of, well, thank you so much for your time. I sure appreciate it.
You want to speak? Okay, I'll start here in the front, front row. Young man? Yes, ma'am?
Okay.
Who wants to speak on the second row? Third row. Okay.
Mayor, Councilman, I'm a local minister here of one of the churches, big worship attenders, and I'm not here speaking on behalf of the Ministerial Association.
Excuse me, could I just have a name, please?
Freddie Rios.
Thank you.
But I do think changing wording into this ordinance could open up a lot of problems, not only for businesses, for churches, for people of my profession doing different things that I would not do, that would cause complications. And so I don't think it's a civil rights issue at all. I think it's the sexual, gay gender, and I ask these councilmen, and you, and different ones, to be cautious of what changes you make here tonight. Thank you for our team.
Anyone else? Yes, sir.
My name is Chris Hartman, HRC, a man. I would typically not speak because I'm not from here, but since Mr. Nelson, who I know is not from here, has spoken tonight, I should add a few words of clarity. I'm the director of the Fairness Campaign, so I clearly have a stake in this game, not just here, but all over the state. I want to clear up a couple of quick misconceptions. What fairness ordinances do when they add sexual orientation and gender identity to a local human rights ordinance is to a local human rights ordinance is very simple. It says that you cannot explicitly fire someone from a job or not hire them for a job. You cannot explicitly kick them out of an apartment or deny them the sale of a home. You cannot explicitly kick them out of a restaurant or deny them another public accommodation based solely on their sexual orientation or gender identity. It has to be clear, and that's why the Human Rights Commission exists, because they investigate. And if there's not evidence, and I mean, it has to be almost as clear as, I am not gonna hire you because you are a gay man, or I'm not gonna hire you because you are a lesbian. There is a full investigation that the Human Rights Commission undertakes to see whether or not there is a preponderance of evidence to prove that that was the case. And so, that is the only thing that adding sexual orientation and gender identity to the existing human rights ordinance does is it ensures that you cannot commit that explicit discrimination because you think that someone is lesbian, gay, bisexual, or transgender. It's true that the state has not yet enacted a statewide ordinance, but seven cities in the state have enacted their own ordinances, which now covers more than twenty-five percent of Kentucky's population. They are, in order of passage, Louisville, Lexington, Covington, then we went ten years, and Vico, Kentucky, became the smallest city in all of America with an anti-discrimination ordinance, population three hundred and thirty-four in Perry County. Uh, then our state's capital of Frankfurt, passed in twenty thirteen, followed by Morehead, and then last year, Danville was the most recent. So, communities have had to step up, in the way that Bardstown is being asked to step up tonight, to include the protections that currently do not exist at the state or federal level. Because right now, here in Bardstown, it is perfectly legal to deny someone entrance to a restaurant or to rent an apartment expressly because you think they are a lesbian. Um, that's all that, that the folks on the Human Rights Commission are trying to, um, to have included in the Human Rights Ordinance here, and I will make myself very available to answer any questions or any legal nuances. Um, all of the doom and gloom has not happened in these other cities, and there have not been, um, a massive amount of frivolous lawsuits, uh, because the Human Rights Commissions have the power to investigate these claims and determine whether or not there is actually evidence of discrimination.
Thank you. Anyone else in, in this room? Yes, sir.
Robert, Mayor, uh, a few terms, I can for, uh, giving, uh, asking for special rights for certain people. Second, uh, I haven't, I just put my mouth. But that's my big point. We're, we already have the Constitution, we already have doable law in this country, and we're breaking down at the seams with special interests, and, uh, I don't think this is the way to go.
Thank you, sir. Anyone back, anyone else in the room? Jeff, would you answer for a last call out there, anyone want to speak? I want, uh, I want everybody to have their say in their, in their turn before we close this talk and go into the council meeting. Yes?
My name is Ray Ritchie. Um, I'm brief. We've already seen here recently some issues that have arisen, arisen from laws, uh, things such as this. Colorado, we had a Christian baker lose their business, there's been several other issues like that across the country. My only question is, is brief, at what point does one group's rights override the rights of the other group? If religious people have a religious objection to something, why should their right be overridden because of another group's special right? That's the only question I have.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Larry Duncan, uh, just listening to some of the comments. Um, on the one hand, it sounds like, uh, it seems to me that some of the statements infer that, uh, this kind of discrimination is explicitly happening, but it's not based upon any real evidence or any real occurrences, it's on the basis of assumption. And so, to have an explicit statement regarding something that hasn't explicitly happened because potentially in the minds of some, it might potentially happen in the future, would seem to me not to be a, a wise, uh, line of thought to develop and enact an ordinance based upon something that might happen in the minds of some. Uh, it seems to me that for an ordinance to really have good solid foundation, it really has to address an issue or issues that have occurred in that arena, in this instance, sexual orientation. So, it doesn't seem to me like there's been any real clear evidence in, in Bardstown that that has clearly or explicitly happened. It assumes that the people of Bardstown think that way, and I think that's probably an unfair assumption. And secondly, there were those who sought to, uh, take more general statements. Uh, for instance, the, the individual who unfortunately took his own life, and equate that to a specific inference that he took his own life because he was harassed because of the sexual orientation. That was not demonstrated, that's inferred, that's assumed. Again, trying to, uh, build an ordinance on the basis of assumption is not a wise foundation to build any ordinance.
Thank you, sir. Jeff, last call out there, last. May, please. Stephanie Greenwell?
Thanks for listening, uh, or you're getting ready to hear me. I don't have a speech, I don't have a plan out, I'm, uh, I'm listening to everyone, and, uh, appreciate what everyone else has to say, but I, I have a scenario for you and it makes sound kind of comical at first, but if I was a dog breeder and I bred my animals, of course I would love them if I did, and, and, uh, I was choosing about who came to purchase them, and someone came to me that wasn't gonna give it a good home, or perhaps she didn't have a puppy meal, and, and I didn't want to sell them to animals because I was feeling like I was playing a part in the animal's life if it wasn't treated right. I was feeling like selling it to them, I was partly blame also taking in, in active role in it, even though not in the sense that they would be, but because I sold it to them, I was still, I did something against what I thought was right. But changing the ordinance to me, though, is similar in that aspect, and I mean, she used that as an example when I was talking to animals, that people not meaning that to be in that way, but just to give an example as how that person would feel about themselves, if they use their money, their hard work, labor, everything that they have to, to open that business, to run that business. If someone else didn't come along and say, I'm sorry, it doesn't matter what they're gonna do with that dog. You'd have to sell it to them, and that would be against what that person thought was right, and they had to take part in that anyway. That's kind of what this thing would do to someone, make them feel like they're taking apart from something that they don't think is right with their money, their time, everything that they've done to run their own business. Now, I don't have a puppy business, but I do have my own business, and this whole thing is kind of interesting because we're not talking about denying someone healthcare in a life or death situation. Certainly, we don't want anyone to deny those things. But what we're meaning is, is they can maybe find somewhere else to go. I'm a short blonde, if I go somewhere and somebody doesn't like short blondes, this is the two thousand and fifteen, you know, I go somewhere and somebody will find a service that I need. If I go to a bank and they won't give me a loan because I don't make enough money, well, another bank may have a different policy. We have cell phones and modern technology, I mean, Bardstown's not that small to where if you can't buy a cake here, somebody else won't sell you one. And, um, my point is that in the process to try to help someone, you're gonna hurt so many more if Bardstown considers that progress, much less this stuff. Anyway, thanks for listening.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Uh, if the council will permit, uh, I will close the, uh, number one item of receipt input from the public, and I would like to go down to, uh, number nine, section F, which is the, uh, Joint Human Rights Commission Ordinance that is, uh, proposed revisions. Councilman Copeland, secure item, agenda item, and you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, I put this on the agenda, I've been to a Human Rights Commission meeting. They had been working on this for several years, I believe. Um, at the meeting, they discussed that, um, the origination of the Human Rights Ordinance was established in nineteen sixty-six. The ordinance has not been updated since nineteen eighty-six. They did go before the magistrate, um, I believe that was tabled. And so, when I went to the meeting, they were working on it. Um, after the first meeting, I went to another meeting, the mayor and Larry Green attended. At that time, um, discussion was talked about in reference to, uh, revising or rewording. They did, uh, send an updated ordinance to the city count, well, excuse me, to the, uh, mayor. And, um, so at that time, I thought that it was appropriate to discuss it or let the, um, Human Rights Commission, the Joint Human Rights Commission, present it to the council to, um, better educate us in what they were trying to do so that we would understand the language that they're using and what exactly that they're wanting to do. This was not up for a vote, it was stated in a newspaper that it was for a vote, and that was not correct. Um, it is just for discussion. So, the director, Ms. Kathy Reed, is here to give us information in regards to the Human Rights Ordinance.
Uh, I spoke earlier, I just want to reiterate that we are asking that the current ordinance be revised to include expanded protected classes, that all the protected classes, that we are recommending that the ordinance be, uh, expanded, they're already, they're already in state or federal law. The only class that we're asking that is not in state and federal law is those with, uh, the sexual orientation and sexual identity. And, uh, we don't think that, that it's unreasonable, and we want to hear everybody's input. We want to know, we're, we're asking that they be protected in employment, in housing, in public accommodation, and in financial transactions, that we say are illegal, uh, financial practices. All this is in the ordinance, we've lived with this for, since nineteen sixty-six. We're asking the addition of, uh, one, uh, class that was not included. I, and the reason primarily is because the law is gonna change, and I'm pretty sure it's gonna change pretty soon, to include this group. And so, that is the whole motivation behind our coming and asking. Uh, I think I'm in most of the classes, I mean, you know, I'm disabled, African American, I'm a woman, I mean... But, uh, it has been shown, the reason that these are protected classes has been shown that these people have routinely been discriminated against because of their age, or too old, or something like that. I'm just, uh, I'm old, you know, because of their age and because, you know, of their race or their religion, or nationality, all of those things, and that's all that we're asking.
Councilman's up for a discussion, if you want to discuss it.
Well, since it's on the table, uh, I'll give my thoughts on it, I've given a lot of thoughts of it, and my, my, my position is that we should not get ahead of the Kentucky Civil Rights Act. I understand that some local commissions, Human Rights Commissions have abandoned language. I'm just not prepared to do that. My, my thoughts are that we should, this, this Human Rights Commission was founded based on, uh, KRS, uh, three thirty-four, uh, the KRS three thirty-four, Kentucky Civil Rights Act. This whole authority that the, the council and the county gave to the Human Rights Commission by creating the commission, giving it its authority, so forth and so on, stemmed from the Kentucky Human Rights Act. So, we, that's the, that's the root of this, that's where we go back to, that's where this whole process started. So, I go back to that, to, for the guidance of what we should do. And the Kentucky Human Rights, the Kentucky Civil Rights Act does include disability, forty and over, and familial status. So, I would be willing to change the ordinance to include those, to go, to mirror the, uh, Kentucky Civil Rights Act, but not anything beyond that. So, that's my opinion.
Thank you, Councilman Hayden. Councilman Bobby Simpson?
Uh, I see no reason to change it at this time because it does copy, uh, our, the ordinance that we have now is basically like Fred said, the KRS, uh, three thirty-four. And if it's good enough for the state at this time, I think it's good enough for the city of Bardstown.
Thank you, Councilman Simpson. Councilman Butler?
I reflect the same, I read the sixty-four Civil Rights Act, sixty-eight, sixty-six, and, uh, transgender protection under EEOC ruling, and Attorney General Holland, he ruled that they were protected under sixty-four Civil Rights Act. I, I feel like that, that pretty much is, it, everything's covered, and ours reflects and mirrors, uh, the civil rights of, of these, of the people. I think they're covered, I don't think we need to progress any further on it.
Thank you. Councilman Williams?
I'm gonna be in agreement with, uh, people that spoke before me. Uh, I'm of the opinion that, uh, first of all, I, uh, I have some, I have a lot of religious convictions, and that's the, the basis of my belief, um, you know, we can create a lot of laws, but, um, I, I like the, the laws I get when I read my body, so, um, and so, I don't want anyone to be discriminated against. I've gone through that myself, and so, um, I really struggle with it, but, um, I just, just feel like what we have in place with, um, the addition that, um, Fred mentioned, the, uh, over forty and the familial stat, the family status, um, so I'm, I'm inclined to, with those two exceptions, think that it is...
Councilman Williams?
I agree with Councilman Fred and also with Councilman Ronan. I've been on council for, I guess, for twenty-some years. Not to my recollection, we had had one incident of complaint against a person. And my opinion, we have a state and federal law, and it indicated in that law no discrimination. If someone is discriminated, they get a good attorney, some of them are lying, that discrimination covers a lot. It covers all nationalities, all sexes, whatever you have. To my opinion, we already get the law, and I don't think the city of Bardstown should get involved in trying to change the language, let the state and federal change the language. That's my opinion.
Councilman finished? Okay, at this time, I'm gonna, uh, I'm gonna ask, uh, we're gonna return to item number two, which is bids and contracts, the discussion, uh, the human rights, uh, you may... two, which is bids and contracts, the discussion, the Human Rights Commission proposal, the discussion is closed. And ladies and gentlemen, please stay if you like, or you may leave. We're on item number two, bids and contracts, proposals and service requests. Number A is, Public Works Wash Bay Edition, and I edit. Yes, sir. Can you hear better? Very good. Thank you.
I'm just glad my work.
Just for me. And, yes.
Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to move on because we're going to be here for a while. So, I want to return back to bids, contracts, proposals, service requests, number two, section A, Publics Wash Bay Edition, and I'd like to, for Larry, Chief, could you close that door or?
He's working up.
Oh, I didn't see the little iris. I'd like to ask Larry to, to talk about this, if you don't mind.
Yes, sir. There, we bid the Wash Bay Edition. We got two bids, and one was twenty-two and one was around sixty-five. And we called and talked to the editors, and we would like to reject all the bids because we think that they are apparently some confusion in what they were bidding for and the product. We tried to get something like a construction management where the person who bid metal building edition, and we had some questions, but all the, what we want was obvious, clear. So, we want to go back to the manufacturer of the metal building, and this year, we got a better spec than we've had, so we'll get better bids, more consistent. We're afraid that low bid didn't include all the parts. We think the metal building cost, the parts are close to that, labor and the concrete, we think is too low. So, we think that we were yelling, open our door to change order heaven, and thought we should reject all the bids.
Question, where, where was the comma and where was the decimal point in that number you gave? Because I just heard twenty-two and sixty-five.
Twenty-two thousand and sixty-five, more or less. I, I, we don't think it's terribly important, the numbers, that, that part parts, and that quantity there, you know, one's three times the other. We couldn't believe the low bid was, had all the parts involved, so we didn't think y'all could award it, so we think we should go back and start over.
So, you withdraw it?
So, we would like to make a motion, I'd ask for a motion to reject all bids.
Do you need a motion to reject the bids?
There were no bids proposed, Jim Callen. They haven't seen them.
Well, you haven't seen them, but we would administratively not award it then, and we probably can do that. We would report that we're going to, and we, we, without, without somebody wanting to argue about it, we would, we're going to recommend, we're going to do that.
And the reason why is, you know, I feel like Mr. Johnson said it was a bad range. There wasn't enough specs, I think, that was done, and we're going to go over that again. And I think it's the best for the, for the people of Bardstown, especially the taxpayers and the way we use the money, and I think we need to redo that.
There, pardon me. And one, excuse me. The reason we would bring it up is that somebody could complain, and so, we feel obligated. We aren't transparent, and that's enough.
Being the ratification of SUA Kentucky LLC sales contract, City Attorney Bruce Reynolds, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. This is to ratify a contract that was signed on January twenty-sixth of this year by the mayor. In these types of high-level negotiations where the Bardstown VCID is trying to convince a company to come to this community, and they may be competing against any number of other communities, some things need to happen. And so, the mayor properly signed that in order to assist in bringing the corporation to Bardstown, but it has not been approved by the council. So, one of the things we need to do, if the council pleases, is to ratify the mayor's signature on the purchase and sale agreement that involve the city of Louisville, the city of Bardstown, DIDC, and ITSUAA. And I think we've worked out ITSUAA of Louisville. It's bringing up to forty-five jobs to Wilson Industrial Park. Again, I say in situations like this, and I have learned this fairly quickly, there are always a number of documents that go between buyer and seller. One wants to make this revision, someone, someone else wants to make another revision. So, I would ask the council to grant the mayor approval for documents that may be revised as late as tomorrow in anticipation of a closing on Thursday. At ten to five, I got another email or three, and that's going to have, there are fifteen documents we need to be ready to use the mayor's judgment, good judgment, to get these documents before the closing agent. We also have agreed to evade ad valorem property taxes for a period of five years, and I have suggested that we need a municipal order, which I have prepared, that is also subject to review, but I, I think it's going to be accepted. I shouldn't say that. So, that's what I'm, I would suggest to the council and the senator, and provide the mayor the authority to do those things. I have, I have the order, if you wish to read it. Or did you all get, I think you got a copy. I don't, Councilmember.
I don't hope it was necessary.
It's municipal order M two thousand fifteen oh seven. That talks about how we're going to evade the taxes and how even though we agreed to provide sewer and water service to ITSUAA, DIDC is now going to pay for those costs in full.
Bruce, I'm, I'm sure, I, I see the municipal order, but you're also speaking of other documents that the mayor has to change or that are uncovered.
No, there, there are other documents. For instance, the deed from the city of Bardstown to ITSUAA, went to them this afternoon, they sent it back with two dozen marks on it. So, it needs to be revised. I talked to Mr. Fonda, and even though he's in Florida, he did the deed, and he's correcting that as we speak. So, that will go out tomorrow, but the mayor can't sign something that's not in front of him tonight, of course.
Okay. So, we're, we're, we have a municipal order, and then we're going to make a motion that hopefully you craft to, just to allow the mayor to sign these documents as needed in order to.
To sign the revision of the documents.
Maybe you could help us with that, with that order.
Well, I'll try. Would, Mayor, wouldn't our motion precede the municipal order?
She said yes.
So, so you want to pass a municipal order first?
No. Preceded that.
Preceded. All right, so then, so that, I had something drafted here, but that, that's not even close to what you meant. Solicitor, yeah. So, if you'll.
Let him make the motion.
And then I'll, I mean, he can't make the motion, but he'll read it, I'll make the, I'll make the motion. Like, I originally did, so I get to read it. But what I would suggest in, in the way of a motion is that the motion be made for the mayor to, the motion be made to ratify the, the sales contract the mayor signed previously, and to provide the mayor with the authority to execute any other documents necessary pursuant to the contract that are required for a closing. And, and that would be a catch-all, but I'm talking about a deed, an affidavit, a closing statement, lots of other things. It still had price, yes.
All right, I'll, I'll make that motion. Second.
Discussion? Don't ask me to repeat it, but I will repeat whatever you said. So, that's, yeah, that's why we recorded, okay. The question is to move? All in favor? Those opposed? Motion is adopted. Okay. Now, I'll have a motion, I'm going to approve the municipal order number M two thousand fifteen oh seven, and you're the floor for a second.
Second, but it's going to be read in its entirety?
Yes. LA should read.
Okay. Municipal order, M two thousand fifteen oh seven, municipal order relating to the sale of a parcel of land in Wilson Industrial Park, known as Revised Track Number Three B by the city of Bardstown and the Bardstown Industrial Development Corporation to ITSUAA USA LLC, as subsequently assigned by ITSUAA USA LLC to ITSUAA Kentucky, excuse me, ITSUAA KY LLC, and the terms and conditions found in said purchase agreement and assignment as to city taxes and sewer and water lines. Whereas the city of Bardstown and the Bardstown Industrial Development Corporation have executed an agreement for purchase and sale of real estate listed as the contract dated January twenty-sixth, two thousand fifteen, selling a tract of land known as Revised Track Number Three B in Wilson Industrial Park, Bardstown, Nelson County, Kentucky, to ITSUAA USA LLC, and said purchaser subsequently assigned all its rights, duties, and obligations contained in the contract to ITSUAA KY LLC. And whereas the city of Bardstown agreed under terms of the contract to evade all taxes otherwise due from the purchaser for a period of five years, and said five-year period shall commence on the date of completion of construction of the building and the completion of the ground surrounding the building, including but not limited to installation of water and sewer lines. And whereas the purchaser is entitled to proof of saying and writing pursuant to the contract, and whereas the contract requires all water and sewer lines required for the operation of said manufacturing plant to be conducted as designed by ITSUAA KY LLC, be installed by the city at no cost to ITSUAA KY LLC. And whereas, be it known that pursuant to Kentucky Revised Statute ninety-two point three zero zero, subsection one, which empowers any city of the home rule class, including city of Bardstown, Kentucky, to exempt manufacturing establishments from city taxation for a period not exceeding five years as an inducement to their location in the city. And whereas Bardstown City Ordinance Number eight oh eight grants the city the authority to declare manufacturing establishments exempt from city taxation for a period of five years. Now therefore be it ordered that the city council of the city of Bardstown, Kentucky, does hereby authorize and direct the mayor to order that no city taxes shall be levied against or collected from ITSUAA KY LLC for a period of five years from the date of completion of ITSUAA's fiscal plan, and be it further ordered that the city council and the mayor do hereby acknowledge and certify that the cost of fees and installation shall be incurred by the city or its assignee, Bardstown Industrial Development Corporation.
Discussion?
I'll call for a question.
Motion's been made to approve, M two thousand fifteen oh seven.
All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Number three, HRB, DRB, or planning and zoning recommendations? And Barbie, I asked you to read the recommendations.
Well, I'll ask if any, Bruce, do you mind reading, do you mind? Thank you.
May I?
Just the recommendations.
Bardstown Historical Review Board Meeting Agenda and Recommendations dated Thursday, February twenty-sixth, two thousand fourteen. A, Complete Performance, applicant and Brett Masterson owner, proposed install surface mounted signage three oh six North Fourth Street. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of the proposed signage with the condition that app, could be changed, rather they planned to cut out the shape of the signage. B, COA dash fifteen dash zero two, Steven Stevers, parentheses, making good sense, LLC, close parentheses, applicant, and Rebecca Fraser, owner, proposed to install a bracketed sign, door sign, and replace a screen door at one twenty-three North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval of the signage for the door and bracket, as well as the screen door. C, COA fifteen oh three, Commonwealth Sign Company applicant and your community bank owner, request approval for a sign face replacement at three fifteen North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval of the sign face and future sign changes due to company name change, as long as approved by staff. D, COA dash fifteen dash oh four, DAK Homes LLC applicant and Charles Gimbley, owner, proposed to install a garage door at one seventeen West Broadway Avenue. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of the discussed garage door with the condition that it is to be painted with paint colors chosen for the property. E, COA dash fifteen dash oh five, Nick Tipper, applicant, owner, proposes to extend a stone soil retention wall and fence at five oh two North Third Street. Recommendation: Approval of the installation of the retaining wall and picket fence as discussed. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve fifteen dash oh one, fifteen dash oh two, fifteen dash three, fifteen dash four, fifteen dash five, we'll refer.
Let's take a motion. Discussion? Just to caveat, could all these recommendations be part of that? If, if the recommendations from the sort of, be part of that?
And could also be instructions that should also be concluded. As my member of the KDFM, that, that should be part of that motion.
How could this be described?
Yes, ma'am.
The motion is to approve COA fifteen dash one, zero one, fifteen dash zero two, fifteen dash zero three, fifteen dash four, fifteen dash five, we'll refer. Let's take a motion. Discussion? Just to caveat, could all these recommendations be part of that? If, if the recommendations from the sort of, be part of that?
And could also be instructions that should also be concluded. As my member of the KDFM, that, that should be part of that motion.
How could this be described?
Yes, ma'am. The motion is to approve COA fifteen dash one, zero one, fifteen dash zero two, fifteen dash zero three, fifteen dash zero four, fifteen dash zero five, with recommendations from Councilman Hayden, Councilman Williams. All in favor? Those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion is adopted. All right. F, DRB two sixteen, Barbie, will you read that description?
DRB two sixteen, application through Matthew Height, two additions with a total of one thousand one hundred and thirty square feet at the address of six oh two Bloomfield
review of developments less than two thousand square feet in size and for projects within the Bardstown corporate limits. Administrative review includes review and recommendation by the D R B chairman, the staff, and final actions by Bardstown City Council.
Excuse me, would that mayor make a recommendation to approve D R B dash two hundred and six?
Second. Discussion? Again, I know we mentioned it last year, but this was here, there won't be any drainage issues?
No, um, I went out there and looked at that myself after I booked the road, and it's the old Jiminy Hubbard building there, and, um, back in the back, that drainage ditch was fixed once before, and it will remain, and then I don't, I don't see any issues with it at all, myself personally.
I respect your opinion, but in the, I don't want to be late.
There it is.
It's that the, uh, that ditch was put in by the city upon the annexation of that Madison Avenue. The ditch is thirty feet wide that went from the street all the way to the railroad. The, uh, this property is at the very upper end, and the ex, the extension of a building into the thirty-foot would not affect the capacity of that ditch, but by one thousandth of a percent or so, very, very small numbers. So, uh, we would recommend the forgiveness of the, or let there be, uh, what is it, encroachment into the permitted area, or the drainage easement area. And that, that, that should have been, that should be part of our approval, that we would forgive that or allow that encroachment.
Motion is to approve, uh, D R B two sixteen at, uh, six oh two Bloomfield Road. All in favor? Uh, those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion's adopted.
Design standards approval for D R B two seventeen, H and H Ventures, for a nine thousand square foot commercial building on revised lot number eight, South Salem Sett- Settlement. The development review board met, reviewed, and recommended approval of the site, building, landscaping, and lighting plans.
Mayor, I'd like a motion that we approve, the D R B two seventeen. Second motion. Discussion? The, uh, motion was to approve D R B two seventeen. All in favor? Uh, those opposed? Eyes have it. Motion's adopted. Item number four, correspondence, do you have any? No? Okay. Uh, item number five will be the minutes. If there's no objections, uh, we will adopt that, adopt the motion to approve the minutes of February twenty-fourth, two thousand fifteen. Since there's no objection, the motion is approved. The minutes of two thousand, uh, twenty-four, two thousand fifteen is adopted by unanimous consent of the regular council. Financial report, nothing. Uh, number seven, ordinance, first, second, you have nothing on that? Any, not, any unfinished business? New business? If there's no, uh, no objection, I will adopt the motions to approve and reappoint the, uh, the list that's in front of you.
We actually say that.
All of them, okay. To reappoint Martin Conker, the board of adjustment, four-year term expires two twenty-eight zero, I mean, two thousand fifteen. Reappoint Mark Mathis, board of adjustments, four-year term expires two twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen. Reappoint, uh, Mark Mathis to the joint city-county plan and zoning, four-year term expires two twenty-eight, two thousand fifteen. Reappoint Claire Mike and Buckerson, uh, Whitland Board, one-year term expires three ten, two thousand fifteen. Reappoint Guthrie McKay, table TV programming committee, three-year term expires three one, two thousand fifteen. Since there's no objections, the motion to approve and reappoint, uh, the names I just referred, is adopted by unanimous consent. Do you have to read them?
No.
All right, now we're going to give that to, uh, municipal order two thousand thirteen dash nineteen.
Our motion, municipal order twenty thirteen nineteen, discussion to revise it.
Councilman Williams, your floor.
Okay. My motion would be, when public input relates directly to operation of city government or city business, the council as a legislative body or individual council member who feel qualified to comment or air and to discuss with the citizen may do so. Suggesting from my city attorney that if such a motion is made, it should be offered as a revision, revising to the list order twenty thirteen nineteen, and also the city attorney suggests that the type of agenda revision, by set order, allowing for recognition of groups and individuals remain, be include in all council agendas. All other language in twenty thirteen nineteen should remain included in F, city council member comment. City council members are permitted to offer comments, uh, observation about the community and operation of city business. Did I do it properly, City Attorney?
It's your motion, Councilman.
Okay. It's up for discussing, that would be my motion, unless the council.
Councilman, you want to discuss this one? No, I'm sorry. Uh, I'll second for the second discussion. Uh, discussion, so I, 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 I think what, what you're proposing, that under, number two F, uh, city council members' comments, you just wanted to add an addendum to that?
Yes, I mean, is it all on the line?
You're saying that if, if somebody feels like they're qualified to answer a question from the audience, uh, they can, they can do so?
Yes, uh, this municipal order twenty thirteen nineteen is readable. It indicated if you qualify, I think, I mean, change the grant, you know, council members should have good knowledge about operation of city business, good knowledge about municipal order, ordering, and also should know the chain of command if you have a legal question. If you have a legal question, you have a city attorney. You ask the city attorney a legal question. If the city attorney is not present, you ask the city clerk. And if the city clerk is not present, well, the mayor had to appoint a person temporarily. So, you gotta have good knowledge, that's what, that's integrated, I think.
Uh, I'd like to see a, a written proposal before I begin to comment. I'd like to see just a written, a written addendum, so we can, so I know exactly where to discuss it. And I, I, I can't, I'm, I'm not ready to vote on anything until I have the right.
If we're not.
Agree with Councilman Hayden, I'd like to see something writing on this, what we're on.
But if we're not in writing, the presiding officer gonna have to enforce the council, uh, order of business. You can't just, just like Buckman, who was adding new language, you cannot do that. So, if we're gonna delay this, the presiding officer have to enforce the order of the city council? Really? I mean, we can do that.
Uh, Councilman, Councilman Liddy, uh, I don't want to speak for Fred, but what I think he's saying is, uh, what you're proposing, if you just submit that in writing, that all the council members have a copy of it?
That's no problem.
And then we can look at it next week?
That's no problem. But like I said, at the time being, uh, the presiding officer have to follow what we have presented, I'm a question. The presiding officer follow what we have adopted and voted on two thousand thirteen, that's the only thing I'm, I'm saying. If we delay it, I request that the mayor follow our rules, our laws, and also the council member.
Uh, Councilman Liddy, I, I agree. Comment, I can be honest, uh, everything that I read in the last three meetings has been in accordance with.
No, no.
Second line after the municipal order twenty thirteen dash, I didn't.
Buckman, you didn't read the whole.
It's like, I did.
To, to read this information, it's not.
I can make a comment.
I know, I mean, you sit here, we, we not supposed to argue, but you not even supposed to make announcement, the presiding officer supposed to make announcement, if you read it, it's right.
I had, I can make a comment as a council.
You didn't make a comment, you made an announcement.
I made a comment, it was my comment.
No, that was announcement.
Okay, that's your turn now.
When you made announcement to the public, that's announcement, that's no comment. I mean, I wish to too. That's, that's announcement, you, you didn't comment. I mean, you can comment as a young, but.
Yeah.
The, the announcement supposed to be made by the presiding officer. It's readable, it's right. That's the only thing I'm saying. This is no black thing or white thing, I'm here to, uh, uh, to implement my expectation of my duty. And I like to follow the, the rules and regulations. I mean, if we're not gonna follow our rules, what use would we have? That's the only thing I'm saying.
Well, I agree with what Fred said, Francis, I'm looking, you need to be able to see what we're talking about. Matter of fact, I went through here trying to follow what you were saying there, and I, you lost me, and I'd rather see something in writing.
I would do it.
So I can understand what we're talking about.
Okay. So what you want to write, my language in my motion?
Well, I'm not, I'm interested in how you want to change this, however you do.
We revise it, not amend it.
Well, revise it, whatever you want to call it, well, amend it as well.
Okay. I'll give it to attorney, and we'll, we'll, we'll put together a lot on each one of you, we have a lot of what you can do, okay?
Mr. Liddy, would you like to amend your motion, sir?
Yes, sir, I'm doing.
Amended or dropped?
To amend his motion, take it.
Let me see, what be the problem, we got a city attorney, what be the problem on that, be amended, and be, uh, what be the problem, saying for me to do?
At, at this point in time, given your gracious agreement to prepare something in writing, uh, I think the motion would be table, your, your, the motion you just made, and.
Really, I didn't make a motion, I, I, I discussed my motion, I indicated that would be my motion, I didn't put the motion on the floor, but I just put the motion for a discussion. Because if I put a motion on the floor, I had to make a motion to move, in, in case this language, but I didn't put the mo, I put the motion over the, what I would be motion.
Well, in that case, I'm not sure there's any.
Right, that's what I'm talking about. I really, I mean, I put a motion on it just for discussion.
You can amend the motion.
Well, until, until we, uh, until we get, uh, in, in writing from, uh, Councilman Liddy, uh, as the presiding officer, I'll continue to enforce the two thousand thirteen, uh, municipal order, and, uh, as we have ever since January the second, I will, I'll continue to address that and, and enforce those rules until Councilman Liddy gets finished. Okay. H, propose changes to the council agenda, uh, Councilman Williams, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, basically what I, uh, was proposing, uh, is that, um, we should always start out our meeting with, um, recognition of individuals and their groups. Uh, ratcheting out for that is, uh, placing this on the agenda allows the mayor or presiding officer the opportunity to recognize individuals, i.e. Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, 4-H, or any other organizations without deviating from the agenda. And then the other change, um, would be adjournment, uh, historically, at the bottom of our page, we've had like anniversaries, and so, in reality, last thing we do is adjourn the anniversary, should precede adjournment. That's just basically what I'm proposing.
Okay, Lee. I'm sure we need to zone out everything.
It's okay, Lee.
I'm going to go on record. Be on all of them. Let me ask you this, uh, when we had the votes here previously, they were recognized.
Yeah, no, I'm just putting it on there, and if we don't have anyone here to recognize, we just do like everything else and skip it, but it's on the agenda. And that's all it is, outline, crush, that's the problem.
Well, I, I, I don't know, I don't know what the, you receive input from the public, you know, you just want to recognize, to be able to recognize, and I thought we ought to might do that input, but that's fine.
I was putting on the agenda.
Oh, you lost, Council, you lost, you just want to.
So, what you're saying?
What? I'm sorry.
You're playing Roland, you, you're talking about specific groups, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts.
4-H, whatever.
Whatever, that, that.
Just recognize that they're here, because a lot of them are here to get badges, or whatever the city is, and so the mayor just officially recognizes them, and then, then we get into the.
It's what we've always done.
We've done it anyhow.
He just puts it on.
Just puts it on the agenda.
But, uh, my, uh, well, okay, but I, I would like for it to say what you're, what we're saying there, uh, individual groups, is that, is, I, I, what I'm saying, that recognize individuals in order groups, if maybe mine's wrong, I don't know.
Recognize individuals in order groups.
In order.
Who's saying, just for recognition?
Yes.
Not discussion, not anything, just recognition for achievements and so forth.
I mean, the Boy Scouts might say they're here getting a medal, but.
But that's an extent.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Quick question, Mayor.
Yes.
Is that something we need to vote on?
I wouldn't take a revision of your municipal order.
Take a, yeah, a revision of municipal order two thousand thirteen, uh, I just, most way, so, yeah, uh, he's coming back with something.
What are you doing?
So, we'll go ahead and say.
I'm gonna come, power, two in together is gonna be separate.
No, they'll be separate, but they're gonna be on the same, just like they were here.
Oh, okay.
Speaking of, it won't be that recognize will have to be changed, because it's already indicated in municipal order, it's the indication of where the anniversary goes in this order of the agenda.
Okay.
That's what it is.
Okay. Uh, number ten, committee reports, uh, the annexation committee meeting, February twenty-seventh, two thousand fifteen, Councilman Hayden?
Uh, yeah, we, we met, uh, the meeting, the preliminary, the minutes are attached, uh, we had a nice long meeting, a little over an hour, the purpose of the meeting is for the people on, the, the council members on the committee to start understanding what our annexation options are. There are four separate annexation possibilities, and as I stressed over and over in the meeting, it's, it was a preliminary meeting, we hadn't met in like ten years, and I thought it was good for us to just know what our options are, so that we can then decide if we want to make any decisions. So, the first meeting was really Larry Green, uh, went, walked through all of the with us of what the options are, we each left with a map to look at. to look at, and I'll be calling you shortly to get to us back together so we can start making some of our connections back to the pool cage. So, uh, and I'm not gonna call that meeting tonight, it'll be shortly. And Mayor, while I have the floor, I might also mention, excuse me, although I haven't had a, a meeting yet, uh, I'm the chair of the water wastewater committee. I met with Larry for a couple of hours, uh, maybe a month ago, and I got a pile of stuff, a show dog couldn't jump over. And, uh, Jessica's giving me some other stuff, so I'm trying to get my hands around all of the issues and projects on the water wastewater, so that I can have a, a committee meeting and go over that with the other committee members. Kind of, not kind of, but really, uh, with an eye towards the budget, of understanding the budget of what we have in there in terms of the water wastewater. And some of our long-term issues like water, some of the other things we talked about, so that's, that's going on, so.
Counsel. Yes, sir. Just, oh, I forgot to.
Councilman Hayden, I just have one question, the fifty percent rule says applies to residents or property owners, can you give me explanation of what that is?
Uh, I hope I say this correctly, Greg, but, uh, the city do not just annex a new industry on its own. It has to be coupled with a residential group, there has to be two residents of one residence per two jobs that are associated with this industry. So it, it prevents the city from just going and annexing a bunch of industries and skipping over the, skipping over the, uh, residences.
You think that'd be like piano keys?
I suppose.
Counsel, you have anything else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
You have area one, area two, area three, area four, are these in order where you would say those are the most important, or are they just listed?
That's all of them, and they're, they're not really in that order, I mean, we have, I mean, that's what we're gonna decide, you know, that's what but they're, they are, they would be separate annexations, they're done separately.
They're not listed in priority?
Not really.
That's what I'm thinking of. Uh, B, the safety committee meeting that's scheduled for March the twelfth, two thousand fifteen, at five p.m. with the mayor's conference room, please. That's it? Uh, staff reports? Yes, sir.
Uh, in two minutes, I'm gonna try and give on the agenda, uh, that, uh, with this HBO Cinemax free preview. It runs April the tenth through, that's right, April the tenth through Monday, April thirteenth, you have that council authorization to do a free preview? So that's what I'm asking for, and, uh, we would also like authorization, uh, once the HBO and Cinemax free preview, uh, technically end, to, uh, preview other pay services throughout the entire month of April. Uh, we've got most of the kinks worked out of our head in, I appreciate everybody's patience, and, uh, we feel like, if we haven't done a free preview in a long time, two caveats. Uh, folks with set tops, you can see all of our streams, just filled in multiplexes and how many, uh, people that don't have a set top box. We only have two places to put anything like that, the new channel one point one, which we would intend during the HBO preview to run HBO family. So we don't run the risk of having something offensive on, uh, a straight TV. And then the other, uh, the other services that are candidates for previewing after the HBO, uh, family previews over, Starz Kids and Family, and Showtime. But we're not allowed to do that without your help.
But we're doing that because we've had that little hiccup in the system for a while.
Well, you, you know, people call us occasionally and say, when are you gonna have a free preview? Uh, this is, uh, this HBO Cinemax one is actually kind of initiated by them, it corresponds with, uh, original series, season premieres of Game of Thrones, Veep, and, and some others. Um, and we thought that, uh, um, given all of the pain that we've caused the folks on our network, might be, you know, dovetail it nicely. Don't do me to spring that, I had it on an agenda before, but I got sidetracked, uh, whole session. That costs it.
So you, I know you weigh on the motion.
I, I guess my chair, or that, so. I make the motion to approve the free previews as.
As, as I described.
I might have a motion for it, but it's no cost.
I see. Discussion? Motion is that we, uh, we approve the free HBO as described, uh, and approved by, uh, Jeff. Jeff, you need to talk on the fifth very loud, you know? And it was, and it's free to the people.
And the other, uh, uh, the other pay services that we have after HBO, Cinemax, Showtime, and Starz. Throughout the month of April.
And I do hate free, we'll do. End of discussion? All in favor?
Uh.
Those opposed? Eyes have it, and the motion is adopted.
Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Chief McCutcheon?
Uh, no, actually, no, well, everything I'll cover the safety meeting, the next council meeting, I'll have some stuff, probably go through the safety committee first.
Mr. Larry Green?
I did.
Really? Chief Powell?
Yeah. I, I would like to just take that to, uh, to the council, where, uh, publicly thank, uh, the firefighters for commendable actions during the harsh weather that we had two weeks in a row. And, uh, just to let you know that we had volunteers, uh, paid staff alike, that voluntarily staffed the stations to reduce the response times to our citizens if they were in need. While they were at those stations, they shoved the snow, uh, some of them, uh, offered up their own equipment to clear parking lots. Helped people that just, that they saw that had fallen, was one of the accidents that we heard. They just did an outstanding job, some of them staying as much as forty-eight hours straight in stations, uh, just to, they, they installed chains on the tires of the vehicles. They adapted the response of the vehicles to try to get, uh, more appropriate vehicles that would go in the snow. Just, they did an outstanding job, and I would like to thank them all, but the council be aware of those actions that they did.
Mayor?
In similar vein, I would say the same for the other works, where, for the last two, the big snows, they worked, uh, about forty-eight hours plowing streets. We have four plow, plows, and they worked around the clock for about two days each. And so I think you could see that, and, uh, we were blessed this last time with, uh, a little sunshine at the end, that helped follow out some things. But, uh, getting the downtown haul of the snow off and swam, I think they did a great job, and, uh, we, uh, where I feel like we could commend their action, and we'll see them, and I wish you would thank Ben and this crew, they did a good job.
I was there on the first snow, I missed the second. Thank you guys, and thank the firefighters, thank the workers, they did a good, commendable. Did miss anyone? Cemetery deeds, if there's no objection, I will adopt a motion to approve cemetery deeds for the transfer only for McLean, one grave site. For Tom, there's, uh, Mr. James Tom, two grave sites, and for, uh, Mr. Dr. Wyndham and Linda Hornback. Can you approve those? And since there's no objection, the motion is, uh, to approve the cemetery deed, adopted by unanimous consent. And if there's no objections, I'll make a motion, uh, to adjourn.
Section.
Just a second, I'll just make sure. I'll adopt a motion to, to adjourn, and I'll look at each council. Since there's no objections, the motion to adjourn is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, gentlemen. This is all.